That's my name.
No.
Because that's the friend of, who went to school with my ex-husband.
Oh, Rick?
Yeah.
I told Phil that I thought he was still good.
So far, so good. Busy, man. I have schedule. Fun stuff. I have a, I'm still doing, I don't know, I'll, 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 I'll. American tomorrow. David on Thursday. What could proceed? Well, so. That's what we have, that's what we're watching.
You want to make it tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, I know Jen, I'll check it back in about a year or so.
Yeah.
Let's move out there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Can you work on any of the legal?
Good, thanks for doing it.
All-star games tonight, or not missing out on any of them.
Yes, good. Good practice. That's Bill, I mean, we're busy, that's for sure.
Hey, we're gonna call meeting order and begin with a pledge of flag, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, under the great justice of God.
Hold on to silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Chalmers? Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sabin?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Ms. Wakis? Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Nine present.
Nine present, thank you. Recognitions and ceremony of proclamations we have done this evening, retirements, we have three people. Cynthia Perdudes from the Area Agency on Aging, Mildred Persari, also from the Area Agency on Aging, and Patrick Tool, who is a member of Domestic Relations. And we'll be sending out a letter of congratulations and wish them good health in their retirement. Any additions or deletions to the voting session agenda? Everyman, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Ms. Sabin.
Ms. Sabin?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Vog?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions and unheard, motion carries. We go to public comment. Mr. Stephen J. Urban, please.
Right now.
Okay. On agenda, okay. Mr. Griffith?
I just have a quick question under Old Business, I marked it on my sheet for you, Mr. German. A couple of weeks ago, I was at the last meeting and I asked a question about the Broad Street Exchange, and I was informed by the manager that there was a contract, but it was expired, and they're currently working on a new contract for Sobek Management. Yet I filed a right to no request, and there is no contract pending, and there's one in the works. So I just would like some clarification from the manager if there ever was a contract for Sobek Management, as he stated. He did state there was a contract, but it was expired. So that's the only, that's the only thing I had under Old Business.
Okay. Mr. Manager, you know?
There was a contract with the previous property management company, and the individual who was running that property management company became ill, and basically could no longer perform the duties. Sobek took over, and I can tell you that we're in the final stages of negotiations with Mr. Sobek. The last draft version out of the Office of Law was in May. It was sent to Eddie O'Neill's department, and they were working with Mr. Sobek to negotiate those terms that we had included or added to the contract. There's one term that is left to be agreed upon, and we're hoping that that will be done shortly.
So when I asked if there was a contract for Sobek Management, the manager misspoke when he said there was one, but it was expired.
Excuse me, I thought I had one for 2018, am I wrong?
There was a, when Sobek took over briefly, he took over the previous contract.
Some sort of letter or something?
There was a letter that confirmed that they were taking over the management of the Broad Street Exchange.
I said something in 2018.
Yeah. Well, if I could get a copy of that one, that was my right to know.
It was a letter, it was a letter of understanding.
Okay.
The contract with the exact terms is being negotiated. I can get you that letter or the confirmatory email if you'd like.
That'd be fine, that'd be perfect, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Walter, I think the original contract was with a guy named Mr. Danzico.
Right.
Yeah, that's the only contract that I remember ever being in existence.
All right, thank you, if you get that to me, that's great.
Absolutely.
Anyone else in the audience, I have no other slips indicating anyone would like to speak on agenda items? Yours is up here, Mr. Danzico.
I'm in the work session.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone who would like to speak on the agenda items? Okay, thank you, moving down to motion approve the minutes of the June 11th meeting. We have a motion. Ms. Sabin, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Perry? And a question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition?
To note, the meeting, the minutes aren't verbatim, so I don't know all the time on that, thank you.
Mr. Urban votes no. And any abstentions and unheard, motion carries. Moving over to the next page, we have a presentation from Evergreen. This gentleman, I saw him earlier. Evergreen is a corporation or a company that's doing the restoration work in the courthouse here. Thank you.
Good evening.
Want to give us your name and?
My name's Bill Mensching, I'm the creative director at Evergreen Architectural Arts, and as you all may know, we're doing restoration and conservation of the courthouse right now. So I've got a presentation over your head, I'm sorry, it's directly over your head.
Yeah, we can move when you get started.
And I can, I'd like to go through that, and I can explain the general scope of work that we're doing, and the, and some of the status, the state of the work right now.
Thank you.
Okay. So, don't mind over.
This Sobek Council as well, this is the phase two of the restoration project. Last year's phase was the rotunda with the scaffolding involved for that. This is the second phase for the rest of the first floor renovations. Evergreen won the contract, County Council allocated funds through the Capital Improvement Fund.
So, thank you all for this opportunity again. So, yeah, we're very happy and honored to be here.
Would you speak it to the microphone there so that everyone?
That'd be better.
As there are.
So, we're very honored to be here at the courthouse doing this work. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Is that better? Okay. Who is Evergreen? Well, one in our state mission statement is that we're committed to the conservation of our built environment, and we place great value and pride in our built heritage of the communities that we serve throughout the nation. What do we offer? Conservation murals, mosaic, and all sorts of art, restoration of that work, new construction, pre-construction, and design. And our locations are in New York, Chicago, Washington DC, and Los Angeles, but we work throughout the country on many courthouses, over 30 state capitol buildings, conservation of countless theaters and churches and other public buildings. Here's some pictures of just our studio and site work. We have conservatives in the top left working at the Sherry Netherlands Hotel, uncovering a mural that had been buried under 19 layers of paint. Also, at the same period that this courthouse was built, are part of our plaster studio, our painting studio on the bottom left, and then our, one of our lead designers on the bottom right. So, our scope of work at the courthouse here. So far, what we've completed or is in progress, so these are all 50 to 100% complete. The marble repair, the restoration, cleaning and polishing of the marble, plaster repair and restoration, the painting and the artwork on canvas, which is all being done in the studio, which I'll be showing you some pictures of, the decorative painting, the glazing, stenciling, replacing the stenciling, or recreating the original stenciling, cleaning the glass in the natural stone mosaics, which you see throughout the courthouse right now. It's just almost feels like an endless process of cleaning that stone. And then coming soon, we'll be gilding, restoring the wood, decorative metal cleaning, more masonry restoration and repairs, and the restoration of one of the second floor ceilings in the corridor. And then finally, installing all of the murals that we're working on. So, the, this more creative work, our general process here is, we'll go into the history of the building and the history of the work, try to understand what was there before, what's been painted over, and what we can get from historical sources, as well as making exposure windows, which is where we've taken off many layers of paint to find little windows over the murals to see what was there before. So you may see a lot of those windows as you look at the murals as you walk around. We do just enough to see whether the original was there, and sometimes we'll try to find the colors and what was there. What we did find and what we had understood previously when we had done a report on this, on the courthouse a few years ago, was that the overpaint is, I just lost my, sorry. So if anyone has better skills at PowerPoint than me?
You just came out, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's there, right? It's here. Yeah. Oh, well. I was just getting to the good stuff, I'm sorry. Are you waiting for that to load?
Shane, you ready to answer?
Anyone?
No, most people have trouble with it.
No, it's just reporting.
Yeah. I haven't had the best of luck with computers lately.
Is that a dial?
Light on, projector's not on.
It's restarted.
Yeah. Wow. You gotta just turn that off. Maybe too, that'll just start over. Turn it up. Source.
Yeah, that's it, go to HDMI 2.
Yeah, okay. All right.
This guy's hard.
Gonna get to the next. Okay, so, getting back to where we were, sorry. So with little exposure windows, we'll take those exposures, study them, we may trace what's underneath, we may take small bits of paint, smaller than the head of a pin, and study it under a microscope. We'll do renderings, do a lot of the artwork in the studio, as you'll see, and then we'll install. So, here's your courthouse, of course. As you may know, it was, you know, it was built in 1909, 1906 to 1909, right at the height of the arts movement in America, which was also, you know, brought a lot of architects and artists together, because they were creating these buildings that were classical revivals, and with them, they needed to adorn them with artwork and ornament. So, many like this building is richly ornamented with that. And they really did have quite a field of great muralists to work with, several of whom are, did work at the courthouse here. We're working with, working over, or trying to recreate two of those muralists' work throughout the corridors, or three, actually. And, I mean, there's some great pieces in the courtrooms as well, and other areas, of course, in the Rottund de Don. So these are the 17 elements that we have, and we're bringing these back, and, you know, they were put into groups, and there was the transportation murals in the north wing, north corridor, and allegories of, what we discovered is they're really allegories of law, loosely based on the muses and on the goddesses of Greek mythology, as well as the four circular murals that, or the rondelles that are in the central corridor, the ones on below here. Now, these are pictures of all the murals before they've been repainted, so they, they had all been repainted over, the last time they were overpainted was in the late 60s, and that may have not been the first time as well. We're trying to bring it back to what they would have, how they would have been painted, and how they would have looked back when the courthouse was built. So in that process, well, these are some of the exposure windows that I discussed earlier. And here we are, with a microscope actually looking at, the large square on the top left is actually smaller than the head of a pin, it's a piece of paint, taken from a wall, and those are layers of paint that we look at, and we count the layers back, and go through these processes to try to understand what the original layers of a color were, even though it looks like it's a ring around Saturn or something. It's actually just paint. And the drawings, on the top left is a picture of one of the murals as they look now, this is with the signing, the erection of Luzern County, and the reading, going over the documents for it. So the top right is our first sketch of it, and the bottom is the, is a more developed drawing of how it would have been originally drawn. We do this for most of the designs. The next one is the same thing, and you can kind of see the transition from the original, from the existing painting now, the drawing below that, the color sketch on the right, and then a study of the figure, of the muse and the child, and this was protection, as law being protection, and she's holding a shield, and she's shielding the child from danger. So a lot of this, we've kind of discovered through reading and understanding what, really studying what these paintings were about.
Mr. Mensching, a question for you.
Yes.
Did your staff sketch those drawings?
These are our drawings, yes.
You drew those from the, what was existing?
We drew those from other examples of the artist's work, and examples of work that was done at that, in that period.
Fantastic.
We tried to take paint off of these, some of these figures, and there wasn't enough there to find, and it would have just, it would have been a futile effort and very, very long process.
Very good.
So we'll start like this. So here's our design studio. This is in Brooklyn. It's, this is a part of the studio, and there's those, the drawings that I just discussed, and we, us working on some of the drawings. We also work on computers and use computer as a tool, not to actually paint with, but as a tool to work, work up the designs. It's important for us to use our hands to do this work, not because it's great as an artist to do that, but really to mimic the way they were originally done, so that we don't get away from that, this style, the original style. In the background here are the cartouches, which we've painted as prototypes for, this is the cartouche around in the frame, and two of the wreaths, which I'll show in a Here's an example of that, of finding that cartouche. The top left is before, or existing, the bottom, just below that is the window of, where the paint was taken off, then there's a tracing, and then finally on the right is our painted version of all of that, where we've really developed the details more, we found other colors that weren't apparent before, and we'll use this for all of the other cartouches. Here's one of our senior artists working in the studio, he's working on the frame for the lunette for protection. And on the left is another example of, the top is the reveal of the paint taken off to find what was underneath originally, and then the bottom is a painted version that we're using as the prototype. Here's our main studio in Brooklyn. These are several of the lunettes being painted at different stages. In the far back, at the bottom, you can see the drawing, the fellow in the middle is starting to paint one of the drawings in, and the woman on the left is painting the Indians on horseback for the transportation corridor. That's underpainting, and she's developing it and working it up from there. Another shot of our studio is two of our artists working on the lunettes for the allegorical corridor of law. And again, you can see the different stages of the painting. And these are all on canvas, they'll be rolled up and cut out, and then pasted into the lunettes in about, in September, end of August, early September, over what's there, so that the, and actually, the existing and the originals will still be there underneath as part of the fabric of the courthouse, and for posterity to look at if they ever wanted to, and see what was really, what was there originally. So the story is still there. We don't like to destroy anything, we want to preserve it as much as we can, but this is the best way to do that. So, that's it, this is one of the murals with the frame around it, just about ready to be installed. So if there's any questions, I'm open.
You know what, how many mirrors were painted over in the 60s?
In these corridors, there were 17.
17 mirrors painted, so we just painted over them without?
Right, repainted them. We're not sure why, we know that there was some flooding here, there was a large, big flood in the early 60s, I believe.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Yeah. This week, this week, seventy-seven.
Before that as well, maybe?
Was it?
Not in the history of the building?
Thirty, I think in the 30s, but I don't think it was that high, I think it was just a quarter or two.
So, for whatever reason, and what we found underneath was pretty washed out paintings, so. There may be some reason that they paint, they're likely to repaint them and refresh them, we don't know. There's no record of it. Yes?
After you do the work, do you leave directions? Do you leave some kind of way to keep it in the best condition possible, so that it does, I mean, obviously, things over 50 years are going to degrade, but, you know, so that it's kept?
Yes, typically, we, any project will have a maintenance manual for the future, and usually, especially for the mural paints, it's very, very minimal. We don't want people cleaning it or filling, they have to wash it every week or anything like that. Best if we just, just left alone, and if they do have to be taken care of, they should really call a conservator, qualified person to touch them. Well, the great thing is that these are high and out of the way, so we're not worried that they'll be, no apparent reason they should be damaged, especially in today's climate-controlled buildings like this one.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for your presentation, we'll look forward to your finished product, I'm sure it'll be.
Okay, thank you.
Spectacular when it's done.
Sorry about the glitch in the computer.
All right. And all this work's going to be done this year?
Yeah, it will be finished in September.
Someone want to turn off the projector there? Thank you. Moving down to the next item, we had a request from Mr. Haas to approve his expenditure of council funds for the CCAP annual conference, and that information is attached to the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Present it.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bilbo? On the question? So the only expense you're asking for, I think, Mr. Haas, is just for the registration fee of $400, correct?
Registration, $400, yep.
Okay, everybody understand that, and we file it by the end of the week, we get a $25 discount, I think, or something like that, thank you.
Some dimes.
Right?
Yep.
Very good. So we have a motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Moving down to number three, motion to adopt a resolution declaring vacancy in Luzern County Board of Elections and Registration. As you can see, there was Mr. Kelleher makes that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snee? There is a letter of resignation there from Mr. Wills in regards to that position. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sabin?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving down to public comment on any items. Mr. Urban?
Stephen J. Urban, Wilkes-Barre. Just a couple of weeks ago, I just want to bring attention to, I Just a couple of weeks ago, I just want to bring attention to, I guess, the Board of Elections, and I know this is probably not the exact form of it yet, but with this particular issue, but it has to do, deal with election process and accumulation of names when it comes to write-in process. I've touched on this issue in the past. Myself and Mr. Griffith were down there a couple of weeks ago on a Monday, I think, to, to look at the tapes that came off the voting machines, and I looked at a couple of the letters asking the Board of Elections to accumulate names for certain individuals and look at the variations of the names. I've noticed a few mistakes on the way some of the votes were counted. One individual had maybe six variations of his name on his letter, which, by the way, was sent through email, which I don't think is really a secure method of, of collecting or asking the county to look at names in the election process, just because Gmail account or Yahoo or AOL, anything could be set up for free online. That person's letter did not contain that person's address or contact information or phone number. Anybody could send an email on behalf of somebody else. You know, I stated to the clerk there that somebody can create an email address saying, hey, I want to withdraw from the election, and using the same premise, that, you know, they're going to accept that email and could potentially pull a candidate off the roster on a machine because it's not really a secure process. Probably great opportune time because the county having computer issues at this point. I happen to work in the field of IT, and this to me is a contentious issue. I went back with one of the tapes, showed the one admin, or the clerk, you know, she goes, well, this is my writing, and I said, well, there's an extra vote, or, you know, here for that individual, and you took it upon yourself to actually add a name or a variation of that name that wasn't listed on that letter, and if you're the administrator of elections, you shouldn't be making that decision on voter intent because that person's explicitly telling them, these are the forms of my name that I wish to count, and that variation was not on that letter. So I think the county needs to develop a better and a more stronger process, and this is not a Republican or Democratic issue, this is a fairness issue for every candidate that ever runs for election in this county, that we need a better process to accumulate names in, in write-ins. Other counties, you have to get a document notarized, you have time and opportunity to put those names on a, on a form and, and get it notarized and make it an official document of record, because I know for a fact that there is another Stephen J. Urban in this county, and if that person potentially came out and just sent the letter, you know, which one is going to come forward at what address, the one in Plains or the one in Wilkes-Barre? You know, the other one could say, hey, I'm running for county council, and, and, you know, there could be a legal fight, all cause, because the county doesn't have a good policy on election process. Once again, like I said, the email acceptance, I think, is, is wrong. I don't think blank pieces of paper, you know, like a few years ago should be used with, with forms of name without some type of street address, city, or borough, obviously Pennsylvania, zip code, and a phone number. And I'll come back to this issue, you know.
Thank you.
Later on, thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
I have a couple of things I'd like to address with council. First one is the $5 ordinance fee for the registration, you folks are going to be discussing at the work session. Myself and many other citizens came and complained about this $5 fee. We didn't think it was fair, we thought it was redundant, and it's still unfair and it's still redundant. This council needs to act on that, take this fee away, it's not necessary. The $5 fee was put in place haphazardly, in my estimation, on May the 8th of 2018. This council passed an ordinance. It never got approved by PennDOT because it wasn't drafted properly, and then we had the other two members of council, the manager and the solicitor, go behind council's back and make an attestation to the state so that ordinance would pass in January. I don't know if council was aware that that all took place, but I think council should be aware. That is your ordinance. It should not be manipulated in any fashion by the office of law or the manager. It should have been brought back to this council and amended properly. Instead, it was manipulated. So we ended up with a $5 fee in 19. Then the state comes along and they amend the law on October of 2018, and thank goodness for C cap, because they're the only ones that gave me the information that I needed about this amendment that we just had in October. Why didn't the manager come to council, tell the council that there was an amendment to that ordinance? And are we going to give those people the money back from January of 2018, or January 2019, their $5 back, that they double, were double charged? It just seems kind of strange to me that this $5 fee has just been pushed through. I understand the money issue, I certainly understand the $1.5 million is very helpful, but I think council needs to do it properly. You need to pass an ordinance and put a sunset clause on that ordinance and do it properly. Give the manager three years to do it, and if it's not done, oh well, it's done, the fee has gone away. The other thing I wanted to ask is about, in the work session, if the council would consider, a member of council would consider making an ordinance to change the administrative code in section 2.7, that says when there's a vacancy on, as an elected official, that anybody who is on the ballot cannot apply for that position. It's highly unfair for this council to accept a vacancy by Mr. Kelleher if that comes to fruition, and then this very council appoint someone who possibly could be running for that position, for that, for that position. It's highly unfair to the candidates that are running, it's highly unethical to the election process, and I think that needs to be addressed in the administrative code that says if there's a vacancy and there's a present ballot out there with candidates on it, those folks who are on that ballot cannot apply for that vacancy. It's a very straightforward process and it protects the people who are running for the position, because it could be to their benefit or it could be to their detriment, depending on which side of the street you're standing on. You have 11 people here that can annihilate a candidate very easily if they put their name in there, only to keep them from coming on this council, and that's not fair. So if somebody on council would take the intestinal fortitude to do that, that would be wonderful. Make an amendment, draft an ordinance, and do it the proper way.
Anyone else in the public who would like to address council in regards to non agenda items? Yes, sir? Want to come to the podium, please? Want to come to the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
Would you give us your name and your residence, please?
My name is Richard Mantle, I live in the Back Mountain.
Where, what community in the Back Mountain, please?
Jackson Township.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm in front of this board tonight to ask a question. What are we doing about the rain tax? What are we doing about a mandate that's going to devastate this county? Your own people said, the millions of dollars that they're going to spend for paying for this, for the airport, yeah, you're going to get a 40% discount, but this is the first year for this. Now, what about next year? What about the year after? I just came back from the Chesapeake Bay area, and the Chesapeake Bay area is 1,000% better than Luzerne County. They have yachts down there, they have sailboats, they have floating docks, they have more things than the Chesapeake Bay area, and we're going to wind up paying for all this? Wait a minute, folks, I think there's something wrong here. I think that we need to get, with all these 32 municipalities are involved in this, and get behind them and say, look, we have to stop this unfunded mandate from DER and DEP. And if we don't, this valley is going to go to pot. It's going to pot in Harrisburg, this valley's going to go to pot. The money that's going to be devastated by people that are going to lose business, construction people that are going to lose houses, the building in this area, with this unfunded mandate, it, it's just, it's just a silly thing, and we could stop it if we joined forces together and tell the DER, and tell the DEP, this MS4 mandate that they have put on people should stop. You were down at that meeting the day I was down there, correct?
Correct.
I showed you the data, I've got over 1,500 hours of investigating this problem. I spoke to a lot of people in the valley, and people are afraid of DER and DEP. Why is that? There are government agencies, but we, the people, we the people, read that sign. I wish everybody would read that every time they come in here. We the people have a right to speak up against this. I spent 35 years in the Army protecting this country, and, and now's the time, I'm still fighting for this country and fighting for every one of you people in here, because if we don't get off our duffs and do something, we are going to be stuck with this bill for the rest of our lives. New York is not paying it, Maryland's not paying it. So what we have to do, we have to fight the unfunded mandate, and that's the only answer that I could come up with. I've been on channel 28, I've been on channel 16, I'm selling signs all over the valley to raise money, to hire an attorney from out of this area to fight this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Yep.
I appreciate your time.
Anyone else?
I have a question about your main meeting. When you hired the lobbyist group, I have a question for Dave. Dave, when the chairman of the lobbyist group was addressing the forum, one of the council members questioned him, how many grants did you get? He said, none. Well, where's your funding coming from? We're going to actually hammer the taxpayers, propose stuff that the taxpayers are going to pay. Why is this being allowed? I can't believe we have a council of 10 people and you sit back and take something like that as an answer that they're going to, they didn't get any grants, but they got a lot of money for Harrisburg City. This, it doesn't sound right. I couldn't sleep for two months over thinking about why you guys did and hired this group for $50,000. Could you maybe?
Sure, I mean, I've been in contact with him recently, we're in the middle of-
Excuse me, are you done, Mr. McCabe, with your commentary?
Yeah, I want to see if he can justify it.
That's fine, but if, I just want to make sure you had a chance to make your commentary.
Okay, yeah, good. On that subject, yeah.
Sure, I've been, I've been in-
Well, you only have three minutes, so.
Okay, okay, I'll try to hurry.
All right.
Do you want me to take any of your time? I can talk.
No, go ahead, talk, I'm done.
You know, I've been in contact with Matic Strategies, they're in the middle of the budget process going on, they're right now in Harrisburg regarding the 911 fee. I feel pretty hopeful that we're going to be able to, to recover more than that account, that amount through this, through this, this budget process. So we're going to, we'll see where we're at in a couple of weeks.
Okay, you know what scares you, Dave, when Friday's Times Leader, I have a copy right here, 48% Luzerne County people, 58% in Wilkes-Barre and Pittston can't pay their bills every month. What does that tell you? That this is a serious problem in Luzerne County, you know?
You read that, right?
So, like I said, I think you should open your eyes and see what's going on and start reading the paper and that, you know, and the council's got to get together and say, you know, we're not going to listen. Like last month or in May, I listened to people saying, well, I was going to vote no for the lobbyist group, but I got phone calls. Phone calls shouldn't be allowed, everybody should make their own decision. Thank you.
I saw another hand. Young lady, do you want to give us your name and your residence, please?
Yes, I'm Michelle Davies, I'm a lifelong resident of Luzerne County.
What municipality, please?
Um, Lake Towne dip.
Thank you.
Okay, so I am a victim of revenge porn. I'm also a victim of an abusive relationship. The county virus has set my life back an entire month, an entire month. The detective's office, which has been extremely helpful, as has Dave Pedry, has been very helpful in everything that they've done for me, but my, my life is on hold because of the county virus. So I have a couple of questions I would like to ask the council as a whole, but I would like it to go back to Dave Parsnick and the IT director. One, how frequently do you backup data? Are the backups onsite, are they offsite? What disaster, what do your disaster recovery plans look like? When was the last disaster recovery drill performed? Is your disaster recovery onsite, offsite? I think I said that already, sorry. What type of virus affected the county? Was it ransomware? Because it sounds like ransomware to me. I'm also, to put this in perspective for you, I am an IT person, so I know what goes into IT, like the entirety of like everything that goes into IT, from the end user all the way up through management, through everything. So this is why I am very upset about this. Like, I, I love this county and I would, I would recommend anyone moving here, but the way that this disaster has been handled is very unfortunate and very bad. Okay, so, was the employee who opened or initiated the virus disciplined? Do, does this employee know how much they've costed the county in revenue of things that could have happened but didn't happen? For three weeks, three. Okay, so was the virus opened, assuming it was an email attachment, was it opened on a company email address, or was it somebody checking their personal email? What measures will you be taking to ensure this doesn't happen again? What is the value or the loss of business? Retitled transfers, any kind of business that happened or that should have happened in the three weeks that you had the virus situation happening? Do you have an antivirus program? What is the antivirus program? Do you have updated virus definitions for the virus program? Do you have ransom, do you have malware protection? If you do, when was the last time the virus definitions were updated? Do you have a WSUS that manages your Windows updates? Do you have updated Windows updates on all of the computers throughout the county? And I would, I would, I wouldn't, I mean, I know you guys will not know the answer, obviously, because you're commissioners, and that is not your job, but these are the questions you need to go and ask the people in charge of your IT, because that is the problem. Here lies the problem. My life is now on hold for another month because of all of this. So I would like some answers, please and thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if we have all the answers for you at this time, I'm sure they're all good questions.
Mm-hmm.
And at some point in time, when this whole computer issue is resolved, I think we'll probably be able to give you a much better set of answers than we can currently.
Okay, I will share my information with you, I would like answers.
That would be fine.
Okay.
We would appreciate that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Very good, we have a motion for adjournment with the voting session.
So moved.
Mr. Snee, second. Ms. Sedman, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Moving to the work session. We'll begin with the monthly division, excuse me. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Hou? Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Ms. Wacus? Mr. McGinley?
Present. Any additions or deletions to the work session agenda? Motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, second.
Second.
Mr. Urban, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Division reports, Mr. Pedry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, council, we have the May report in front of you, I'll be open to answer any questions that we have, but there's one thing that I really wanted to highlight for council, that's on page eight of the report, Veterans Affairs. We don't talk about Veterans Affairs a lot here, but there's something that they did that is a wonderful thing, that they just do every day, they do every year, which is serve our veterans. The Luzerne County veteran staff distribute over 85,000 flags for decoration of veterans' grave for the Memorial Day holiday. The placement of the flags at these cemeteries is done by volunteers from the veteran service posts throughout the county. So I want to thank the veteran services posts throughout the counties, the American Legions, the veteran services posts throughout the entire county for their service and their assistance in this matter. I want to thank our Veterans Affairs staff led by Jim Spagnola in order to the distribution of these flags. I recently drove my son through the, through a graveyard, and he noticed all the flags, I had a long talk with him about what, so those are, that's just one example of a Luzerne County employee helping someone every single day. They don't do it for applause or anything along those lines, but a wonderful thing that they've done, they've done for the betterment of Luzerne County. I will take this opportunity to provide- I will take this opportunity to provide the IT update now, if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
So obviously, Luzerne County has been affected by a cyber attack. We are not the only municipality across the Commonwealth, or actually, across the nation, that's been affected by a cyber attack in the, in the past couple of months. I'm going to go through every department and every division at this point and give you an update as to where we're at. Most important thing that the Luzerne County does, if you ask me, is public safety. Nine-one-one and EMA. Nine-one-one has been unaffected due to the fact that they are on a separate server as well as EMA. They're also operational without a problem. Nine-one-one and EMA, once again, completely clear of the cyber attack issue, and we're able to move forward with those matters. The major issue that we're having still is with the assessors department. The camera system is still down. Now, staff is being provided with a read-only backup so that all data can be viewed, but not changed or edited. All assessment hearings and sheriff sales have been rescheduled until August of 2019. And outside vendors have been assigned to review this issue, as well as our internal staff as well. But that is the major department that is, that's currently down right now. And once again, we're trying to find workarounds until we're able to get this thing back up and running. But the camera system is still down, and we are providing them with a read-only backup at this time, so that, once again, the data can be viewed, but not changed or edited from there. The coroner's office, this matter is being addressed today. They are working on it today. It will be scheduled to be operational by tomorrow, Wednesday. In the recorder of deeds, so the recorder of deeds were down due to a lot of the problems that we were having with Kama, because they have to have PIN certifications from the assessors' office. But in five days, recorder of deeds employees, along with employees of the assessors' office, have filed one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven documents. I want to thank Mary Dislesky, who's in the back of the, back of the meeting here tonight, and her staff for what they're doing. They've cleared over two weeks of backlog filings in the space of two, in the space of five days. Currently, we are at one and one-half weeks behind of recorder of deeds. This was a major issue. Obviously, the, the transfers of real estate and the mortgages that have to be filed is something that we have to do in the county, we need to maintain and we need to move forward. But clearing off this huge backlog with their hard, with their hard work through voluntary overtime at this point has been a huge success, and we're hoping to get caught up soon. Pathon Attorney and Clerk of Courts, filings are up to date in the Pathon Attorney and Clerk of Courts departments, and there was some question from our newspapers regarding public access computers, and those are operational as of today. Admin Services, all departments are operational servicing in administrative services. Budget and Finance, all departments are operational other than the assessors' office. The Luzerne County Correctional Facility, all departments are operational. Human Services, all departments are operational. Judicial Services, all departments are operational with the exception of the sheriff's use of the camera system for the sheriff sale purposes. Operational Services, all departments are operational. Public Defender, all departments are operational. Office of Law, all departments are operational. Courts, Judiciary, Domestic Relations, the courts are operational. The Controller's Office is operational. The District Attorney's Office, it was reported to me that they're operational. Ms. Davies, I'm not sure what the issue was, but I will reach out to Stevie Salavantis tomorrow to see what the story is, because it was reported to us that all of their, that they were operational, and we are currently rebuilding their Metro Alert server. That's the only thing that was reported to us. But I'll find out if that was the holdup in the District Attorney's Office.
Yeah, he was waiting for something from Facebook, but he said he couldn't log in because the computers were not operational. Something back from Facebook.
Okay. I'll follow up with her. The, the report that I have from, from District Attorney Salavantis is that all, they're all operational at this time. But maybe she didn't talk to the detective you spoke with. As an update from other cities that are looking into this, Baltimore City is still under a cyber attack, and all of their departments have been closed for about two months. Major, major city. Rivera City, Florida, just paid six hundred thousand dollars for a ransomware attack. And Philadelphia courts have been down for over a month. It's been about a month here in Luzerne County since we were attacked in a cyber attack. And I would say this, we're down to one department that is, that is having a major issue at this time. We're not where we wanted to be. The public will still have to be patient with us as we slowly bring computers back up to speed, but every department is operational at this time, other than the assessors. So we're going to continue to work on this matter and hopefully won't hit any more snags moving forward.
Strauss?
Question, Mr. Pedry. What, what does our insurance policy say about covering the cost for this event?
So, we have a cyber attack insurance policy, and those are one of the insurance policy that council approves every year. And every year, I say, do we really need this? It turned out we did. There's a ten thousand dollar deductible on the traveler's insurance policy. They hand, it covers a large assortment of matters from some of the software and the hardware, as well as some of the overtime that will be in place from, 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 from having to get caught up.
Okay.
It's an insurance policy, so we have to make sure they were on top of every, every item, and we've been documenting things per their suggestions as we move forward.
Very good. And I think I remember last meeting that you or Mr. Parsnick said that our data was not compromised. In other words, we don't, and I think this is for Ms. Davies, since you came in, Ms. Davies, that it's not out there in cyberspace, that yes, our, our system was knocked out. However, precious data for county residents, taxpayers, was not compromised.
Correct. We have no reason to believe that, we have no reason to believe that any sort of county, of any sort of county information has been placed out into the, into the dark web or the internet in order that, that somebody can grab onto that information at this point. We, listen, we were able to catch this through our antivirus, started on our system on a Friday, looks like we caught it on a Saturday. We're happy that we're able to catch it in that, in that short time, in that short timeline, because it was Memorial Day weekend during that time. But IT staff has been working eighty to a hundred hour weeks on this. We've brought in consultants from outside of the area in order to review this. The insurance company has recommended consultants, as well as CCAP, in order to review this matter. We're going to be doing a complete investigative review of this entire matter, and we'll have a full and complete report as to how, how it got in, what got in, how we're able to get it out, how we're going to keep these things out moving forward. But right now, we're still in recuperation mode. And our departments are up and running. We're still collecting, we're still collecting taxes, we're issuing gun permits, we're recording deeds, we're doing everything that we do here in Luzerne County.
Except, and you said the tax sale that's normally, I'm going to take place July fifteenth, that is postponed now?
Correct.
Until August?
The sheriff's tax sale was postponed until August. That was, that was reported and advertised.
Somebody actually asked me about that, so that's helpful, though, too.
Assessment hearings are delayed, too.
Assessment hearings are also delayed.
Right. And then, one thing, too, if you could answer all of those questions that Ms. Davis asked you as soon as you can, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
I, I find it hard to believe that you don't know where this, which computer and which person opened up the system at this point in time. I find it hard to believe that you don't know that.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Urban, I would say that the most important issue right now is to get the system up and operating completely and fully. Certainly, we'll be able to identify things as we go forward.
You don't want it to happen again.
That's correct.
That's why you want to...
And that's why you're going to have a report that's going to talk about that.
Well, I think, I think the quicker you, you identify who opened it up and how it came in, you're going to teach people not to open up things and not to let things in. The quicker you can do that, quicker you can do that. Not, not wait six months from now to do that.
Well, I would say this, there has been clear guidelines put in place for all county employees, and access to any and all websites outside of very, very small number of approved websites has been extremely curtailed. So we're not going to be in a situation...
But even prior to this, we, we as council members receive emails, and it warns us that it's from an external source. We did this before, which was a good step in, in the right direction, Mr. Pedry and your staff, but that was before this disaster hit.
That's been part of the system for a little while.
It was for a little while, right? But it was before this, this breach happened, so...
That's correct.
It wasn't like we were just caught with our pants down.
Ms. Saban?
As you're reading about the several breaches in other counties and other places, hospitals, whatever, and the ransoms that are being requested, we weren't given any kind of ransom, no to pay, but is that because we found it so fast, or you just don't know?
I couldn't tell you. I couldn't answer that one.
Well, they don't have our data, so...
We don't have any money anyway, Sheila.
Well, I know that.
I mean, like, we picked the wrong place.
Thank you. Mr. Swets?
As far as that question that I asked, do I have any answer for that?
For...
Who was speaking? I kept, sorry. What?
When?
About the rain tax.
Are you going to answer unfunded mandates by...
Well, I think, let other, we'll get through your, and we'll talk about that at the end. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Swets?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packet is your budget report. Just a couple items I wanted to highlight, and then as another month, I'll take any questions. Page thirty-seven, you'll see that the general fund expenses, retirements recorded. I believe we talked in the last couple of months about the timing of the retirement payment was made, and that it would show up in your account. So you could see that was, half the year was almost five point four million dollars. So that's on page thirteen. Revenue in general is slightly higher than last year. You will say that, I will say that the year-to-date numbers have the audit adjustments to date, so those numbers may change a little bit, but we are higher than last year. And then we moved the twenty-five thousand dollars as requested into the capital fund, when we did the capital fund. So that's all I have on the budget performance report. AP is a little more lengthy because of getting caught up with some of these bills. You see in the dates, a lot of the dates are May, so we are working, as other departments are, to get caught up. I think on Monday, we sent out about three hundred checks. So if you look at the report, four checks, you will see quite a few checks with May dates, but we're in the process of getting those out. So besides those two things, any questions that council may have?
And the reason they were slow in getting out is the fact that we had issues with the computers?
Correct, correct. We could not, we could not process anything out. New World was down, so we couldn't process accounts kind of here.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Swets?
Ms. Swet, just one on the, on the audit.
That's next, Mr. Urban.
Yeah, that's next. Yeah, that's fine.
Now, let's get through the update on the budget, and then we'll get audits right, right behind it, so...
Sure.
Questions on regards to budget update?
I mean, this, I have one for Mr. Pedry still, if I could, Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm what?
I'm just looking at manager's report here, too. Just two quick questions. Chase Rose?
We'll save it to the end, okay?
Oh, that's all right.
And then, before we get to the council committees, we'll go back to that. Thank you. Any budget? Move the audit update, and then Mr. Urban has a question.
Sure. So the audit update in your packet attached is the two thousand eighteen audit update. It goes through a letter we received from Clifton Larson Allen. I believe the letter went to council first. As you've had talked in the past, council's a whole, not just Mr. McGinley. Council is the client, not budget finance. We prepare the information. So we got the information the same day, but I'm going to assume probably later in the day. So it talks about the letter that Clifton Larson Allen provided about the delay for the audit on the due-to-from accounts, and I'll answer any questions and go through some details of some things that were, are done, hundred percent complete, things in progress, and what's being done to get them done, and then some of the obstacles we encountered.
Well, would you go through that first?
Sure.
And maybe some questions that will come from that.
Sure, sure. So, things that are done, all the, all of the draft reports are in. And the three final reports that aren't in are children and youth and domestic relations. Children and youth, we do expect to be unqualified. The draft came in qualified. So if you remember, before the audit process started, there was really three things. We thought there were two, but it was really three separate things. One was the two point four million for children and youth, which was cleared. One was a reconciliation between just the county and, and children and youth, which will also be cleared. And then one is between the county and all other due-to-from funds. And that's all the other human service agencies, convention visitors, all other funds that the county receives money from, which is the one that we're still working on. So you will see tomorrow, a, an unqualified report for children and youth. Once that's in, we'll give it to our auditors. All the human service agencies will have final reports that are unqualified. Some of the other issues we talked about, and I think we talked about it last issue, was the timing, that ideally, we'd like all the reports by five-thirty-one. Domestic relations was working with the state on the reimbursement that the county gets for the Grominsky building. They worked with our third party that does our cost allocation plan. So as of June twelfth, they were still going back and forth on that, and we didn't even have a draft. So those are some of the things. Children and youth, we got a draft where it was qualified on the fact that they were waiting for the Baker Tilly, who was contracted in February, audit of the due-to-froms. So that's been resolved. The whole due-to-from is not, but the point related to children and youth has been resolved. So while there's still work to go, there have been things that are cleared, and we have a plan to get the, the pieces that aren't cleared. And if you look at the memo in item three, I realize the date, tomorrow, June twenty-sixth, Baker Tilly will be here again. We've had numerous conference calls. I've spent, my staff spent probably, since February, seven to ten conference calls. If you remember, almost every audit meeting, I was here saying, I have a conference call tomorrow, I have a conference call Friday, of time with Baker Tilly. The children and youth staff and their human service director of the fiscal side, Adam, has spent time. We gave documents to Baker Tilly, we provided documents to our auditors, and that's still outstanding. One other thing I do want to talk about is, you can also see in the memo, it's the same issue as last year. And to even go a little bit further back, if you go back to the first audit that I have record of, in PDF, not the first audit the county ever did, in two thousand twelve, there was talks of due-to-from variances. So this isn't a new issue. We've had unqualified audits without this issue. We've made some progress on this issue. At one point, you remember, the county was qualified for multiple items, and we didn't have bank recs done. So that's where we are today. So the plan is for Baker Tilly to come in tomorrow to work with my staff. My staff has put in, just in these last few weeks, over a hundred hours, just on this issue. And it wasn't because this issue was, the other issues weren't important, it was because until this issue is cleared, we're not going to get an unqualified audit. And the goal has always been to get an unqualified audit. That goal doesn't change. So that's what we're working for. If we don't get there, we'll have the auditors, when they do their presentation, explain why we weren't able to get there, but the goal didn't change. The reason this was today and not Friday is, as talked before at the preamble, transparency. It's a public meeting. We could have sent an email at eleven fifty-nine on Friday, but we had a public meeting, it was on the agenda for the handout, so, and it was only a few days. If it was the Friday, and the meeting was a week and a half away, we would have sent something. So really, it was get something out, get the facts out, transparency, and take any So really, it was get something out, get the facts out, transparency, and take any questions.
Mr. Urban?
How confident are you you're gonna meet the July thirty-first deadline?
Urban, can you just speak a little louder? We can't hear you very well.
No, I want, I asked him how confident he is that he's gonna meet the July thirty-first deadline.
Very, because we have to. So I'll, I'll, I'll phrase it in two ways. One, this is an old item that's been out there, so on that point, not very. But it has to be done, Mr. Urban, because if the county's gonna borrow money, if we're gonna have refinancing, we need to have an audit report. We don't have an audit report, we've got the nine-one-one problem on the horizon for the funding, we have to have it done. So Baker Tilly's aware of that, they've been aware of it since February, when they're contracted, they're coming in tomorrow, we'll see where we are tomorrow, and we'll stay until it gets done. If it's not done by July thirty-first, there's no way this county can even come to council asking for borrowing, because we won't have an audit report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for Mr. Swet?
If you could be more specific about the unreconciled material difference in Mr. Swet?
Sure.
He's had some gone since two thousand twelve.
Sure.
My big question is, okay, if it's been gone for eight years now, or nearly seven years, what's the intrinsic problem?
Yeah, sure. That's a good question. So when you get, when you get the due-to-froms, and I've talked about it at the beginning before, but for people that are new and people in the audience, the intrinsic problem is, in the past, the county did not reconcile to the other books. So when I started, if children and youth said they received a check from the county for a million dollars, and that audit was issued six months before or after the county, we never made an entry to tie to that report. We never sat down with the auditors and the fiscal staff to say, "What is that number? Do we agree to that number?" We've been doing that the last three or four years, probably since twenty, the end of two thousand fourteen. And it was one of Baker Tilly's recommendations, again, it's been in these findings, that we need to get the audits on time. One of the other things is, I think in two thousand twelve, we had, today I mentioned two or three that were late, we had, I think, thirteen component units that were late. There was a litany of every audit was in late. So we can't match to something that we don't have. Also, everything wasn't in New World. So in the past, there was items where the agencies or other, other agencies were using something other than that. Even if they had ACS, if they were using something else, does that match the audit report? So it's not, it, in theory, it's an easy problem. It's just sitting down and saying, "This versus this." So it's not a hard problem, but the issue becomes the fact that it's on the balance sheet, so it doesn't close out. As we talked before about the two point four million, every year, that number goes to fund balance. And if in a year, they find something substantially wrong, they'll restate the beginning number. And I think that was done in two thousand twelve or thirteen. They restated the beginning number due to other information they got. So everything's contained in one year. When you're talking on the balance sheet, that's been since county was in existence. No matter how many systems, fiscal directors, that's been an issue. So it's just getting to the point of, this is what we have in front of us, this is the timeline, it's gotta get done. And I put the effort out there just to say, we're kind of trial and error, looked at the payroll, looked at the healthcare accruals, because as we talked before, last year, it was five point four million dollars. That's not somebody's couple-dollar UC deduction. So we're trying to sit down and say, "What is not calculating correctly?" And we've had unqualified audits with this before, where it wasn't, and I think I talked before, the auditors make the materiality, not the county. So we've had unqualified audits with this issue, we're working on it, it's gotta be done, we need to get refinancing done. But my team's looked at it, Baker Tilly's looked at it, Mr. Johns was here last year, when the audit was issued in September, fiscal agencies, fiscal people from all of our human service agencies were up here. So a lot of work's been done, but until you find it, it's like a Rubik's Cube. We might be missing that one slide, you could have everything lined up, but until you have the whole picture, you're not done. And that's what we're working on. So Baker Tilly's kind of fresh eyes, they did the audit, they know enough about New World and the staff, but they're a couple of years removed, and we're hoping by them coming in, that they could see something that's been missed before, and being on site. Again, there's been work done remotely and conference calls.
And if I could add, we, Mr. Swet, if I misspeak, correct me here, but we have no reason to believe that there's any cash missing or anything along those lines.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that was over my head, frankly, Mr. Swet. I mean, it's just, talk about a Rubik's Cube, you know, a lot of colors on that one. But, you know, my thing is, I don't even mind informing us later, I don't mind that, but, you know, this council majority last year did approve that ADV contract, and that was, the intent was to free up that payroll time, so the staff could help and rectify these problems, and to still see this still is just extremely frustrating. Because, you know, we did make that, I didn't vote for it, but the council majority made that, made that support, and, you know, what are we doing?
And I think it's one of those, sure, and I think it's one of those things that, that was the intent, and it definitely helped, but just like when New World came on board, the first year, there was more implementation time than we thought, and you'll see, you know, dividends in the future. It just was not, this January, our team wasn't available to work on this. But we did work on this last June to September, before we got a qualified report issued. We stopped some time for the budget, and we looked at it, you know, in the beginning of the year, we weren't working on ADP, and that's when we decided, "Let's get Baker Tilly involved," and they've been looking at it. So I think to Mr. Urban's point, it's not, it's not that an effort hasn't been put in, so just by saying July doesn't mean we push a button and we're gonna find it in five minutes tomorrow, but we need an audit report to be able to, and the audit report can't say that it's no opinion, because you can't get any financing out of it. So unfortunately, well, you know, the timeline is what the timeline is, and it really has to be done by July thirty-first. That's where we're at. So that's what we're working on.
Anyone else? Oh, yeah, I want to point out now, you told me, you're reporting tonight that children and youth, the issues that were thought to be there last year have been resolved?
Correct. So if we sat down last year, and the due-to-from issue was on there, I believe it was five point four million, it's on like page eight of the audit report, and they thought that that was primarily children and youth. When we went through with children and youth, when we looked at our books and children and youths books, even though Baker Tilly did some work on that, and they reconciled checks, they vouched checks, they went back to payables, through that work and work of my staff, and work of the children and youth team, and the children and youth fiscal team, we were able to provide information that tonight, I got a draft that's unqualified. So every indication is, again, we've seen change between draft and final, this, even on the general fund, but every indication is that we'll get a final children and youth unqualified audit, which would mean all of the human service agencies for two thousand eighteen would be unqualified.
Very good. Anyone else?
And you know the charter says June thirtieth, right?
Well aware of that.
Okay. And the manager had a bonus put in his, even though he shouldn't have, I didn't vote for it, being done by June thirtieth, he'd get a bonus.
That's for next year.
Next year, so it didn't apply this year?
Didn't apply this year. Wouldn't have stopped us.
Better take it out anyway.
Thank you. Capital plan discussion. We have had the capital plan introduced by the manager. Are there any questions or any recommendations that you would like to bring forward? If you have questions that you don't have prepared tonight, you wanna send them forward, then we'll add them to the future agenda that the...
I got a question. I guess, this, this needs to be brought before council. When I asked a question, when the capital plan was introduced, about the bridge on Division Street, says, "Well, we gave money to Hanover Township to take care of that issue." Well, there's an order in the bridge file up at Roden Bridge that says the county and the city of Wooksboro will maintain that bridge. I think somebody needs to be working on a resolution transferring that responsibility to Hanover Township, and it needs to come in front of this board for approval, because as of now, the law is, if you look through that bridge file, the law is that, that Hanover Township piece belongs to Luzerne County, and the other half belongs to the city of Wooksboro, and that's in the bridge file, because I read the bridge file on that a number of times.
Mr. Urban, we're working on that. You'll be getting a few transfers of bridges coming up in the next few weeks.
Well, that, that one is important. I mean, you gave them the money, or you told them to go proceed, but council didn't vote on that yet, and it needs to.
Well, and that goes down to the next item, where we have an intergovernmental agreement with Butler Township for repair and dedication of roads. And that's similar to what you're talking about with the bridge, Mr. Urban.
Yeah, it is.
It would be an intergovernmental agreement there, that they would take over the responsibility for that bridge.
Right. We did that with one bridge down there already, and this is good, to do this.
And we'll be doing it with Cunningham as well, and Sugarloaf.
Any questions on that agreement?
So, council, this is, I'm sorry. So, council, this is an ordinance for entering into intergovernmental agreement with Butler Township. The major, one of the major road projects that the county has entered into this year is the full-deep reclamation and the, of the foothills road in Butler Township. It goes, it's about seven point eight miles of road, that goes from three oh nine in Butler all the way over across Cunningham Borough and into Sugarloaf Township, and ends on ninety-three, Route ninety-three in Sugarloaf Township. Upon this project being completed, those three municipalities have agreed to take over this road, and enjoy the liquid fuels money that would, that would come with that, and the county would then lower our road maintenance number from a hundred twenty-eight miles to a hundred twenty-one miles. We're hoping to use this as a pilot program for other municipalities, so that they can see what we can do if we're able to work together. So I would highly recommend council review this and support this measure as we move forward.
Questions, that recording? Item number six, Mr. Urban brought this up the last minute about the VIGL registration fee, and the fact that there was an amendment made in October last year, where the amendment said that for every year you register, you pay five dollars regardless of it's a one or two-year registration.
That's correct. And then, and then when I got my bill for my car that was due in April, I saw ten dollars on there for two years, not five. And I think that, this, number one, I didn't support the five dollar fee, and I, number two, I think we had to rescind the five dollar fee and the ten dollar fee.
And I also got one, and I paid it.
You paid it, you got a lot of money.
No, I think five dollars is something that's reasonable.
Well, you know, I think, I think, I think there's a failure to understand, there's a failure to understand the people. You know, I think that Times Leader article touches home, and I've said this time and time again, and I'll keep on saying it. You know, the federal government takes a certain percentage of your income. You pay into Social Security, you pay into Medicare, and when you go on Medicare, you find out everything you paid in doesn't go to Part B, it only goes to Part A. Okay? You, you pay into state taxes, you pay into local taxes, and then you're paying to county taxes, and then you're paying to school taxes, and then you're paying the local taxes again. And then you pay a five dollar fee, and now you're paying a rainwater fee, and now you're paying a sanitary authority bill, you know, which rate, which, which went up, and I think that the rainwater fee is a bogus fee, because, you know, the sanitary authority knew for at least thirty years, maybe even longer, that they had to separate the storm and the sewer here in the river, and they never did it. And I think that this whole rainwater fee is a rouge for them to get more money, but not put it at what they need to do. You know, and going after somebody with a well that has no sewer, and has a septic in their yard, to me, is, is, is wrong, wrong, and they shouldn't have to pay, and to go after anybody is wrong. You know, I brought up at this council, that when the county got a bill, you now had a cause of action. And the cause of action wasn't negotiate the bill down, the cause of action, my recommendation to the cause of action was file a lawsuit on behalf of the people in this county, and get it moving.
Excuse me, excuse me.
That was my, that was my recommendation, which I guess fell on deaf ears. And that's still my recommendation today. So with the fee, I figured my answer, and I think there's a failure on the part of individuals in government to realize the full burden that the people are paying, the full burden. Because you're on the school, where you only care about school tax, you don't care about anything else. You're in the county, you only think, "This is only a dollar more, it's only a dollar more a week." Well, how many more dollars a week for everybody are you paying? You're paying a lot, a lot. And, you know, look at, look at the senior citizen population in this county, they're not getting a lot. They're already taking more from them than they get. And there's a failure for people in the government to realize that. That cumulative effect, no one realizes, no one realizes. And I can go on to the taxes that are on the bills, too. Like, you know, half your phone bill's taxes. Why? Because I pay, I pay these bills. I see what they are, and I look at them. And I hope everybody that's in government looks at that, not only looks at their little piece of the pie, but look at what you're doing to the people. Look at what you're doing to the people. If you read that Northeastern Business article, huh, in Lackawanna College, nineteen percent of the people going to Lackawanna College are in default of their student loan. It's not an expensive school. You know, so how can people pay all of these things?
Okay. Mr. Hoss, you had a question for Mr. Pedry on the division reports?
Yeah, I did actually, too, if I could. Jackson, I'm sorry, Jackson Township, Chase Road, Mr. Pedry?
Mr. Plush here? Can you give us an update on Chase Road? My favorite topic.
Chase Road update, Mr. Plush. How are we doing?
Good.
Yeah, good.
What's your question?
Chase Road, I'm seeing here, and it said, "We'd start milling here in June twenty nineteen, and we got a week left."
Only enough, I just got an email from Bertie Banks, and the weather setbacks, they're not gonna start till, we were gonna start before the fourth, but they decided not to ruin anybody's holiday, so they just started July eighth.
Okay. July eighth, we're gonna start, we're starting milling, Chase Road. Fantastic.
Well, that, Chase Road is not a milling, that's a full reconstruction.
Full, even better.
It's front to back, from the beginning of Hillside to Chase Corners, about one mile.
Three oh nine there, out to Chase Corners, okay. One mile stretch.
About one mile.
Fantastic. Thanks for the update. And the other one, Mr. Pedry, too, is, I'm looking at page sixteen of the agenda, WBW Master Airport Plan, and, I mean, since we're talking about capital plan stuff, don't, don't we need the advisory board to, to help with format that?
Yeah, I would, listen, I would, well, this isn't, two things. Okay, the, the master plan, it doesn't need an advisory board from here, because this is the physical, what needs to be done for the physical movement of that.
Just from the engineering standpoint?
From the engineering side of things. They'll make a recommendation as to, listen, do we need to extend the runway? Do we need to do this? Do we need to add a new fuel pump? Those type of things from there. That being said, that advisory board, I don't think has, we've had any interest in advisory board for as long as I've, I've been here.
Yeah.
So if there are members of the public that are interested in aviation, or interested in, you know, tourism in general, I really believe that the forty-fourth airport can really, can really be something that the county can be very, very proud of. And so I would encourage members of the public to apply for that board, because we haven't had interest in that board in years.
I know. Mr. McGinley and I served on that in prior years, but it's, it's been quite a few years now since it's been constituted.
Well, update today, a gentleman called, the current mayor of West Pittston, he expressed an interest, and he expresses that there are other people that he's aware of that express, and hopefully, we'll get those applications and move forward.
Once the master plan is updated, and we have a master plan, then we can go after federal funding.
Yes.
So first step would be here, and, you know, sitting on the airport board with Mr. McGinley and Councilwoman Wacus at the Wooksboro Scranton Airport, Carl Beersley, who's the director of the airport, says this, and there's two seasons in airports. There's winter and there's construction, because of the, the large amount of federal monies out there that should be, that should be supporting our airports. Once we have this master plan, we can then go after federal funding in order to put some more amenities into the forty-fourth airport.
Yeah, that's, because I, I agree. I'm looking at your report here, it said, it's been accepted by the FAA, and the county was awarded the FAA grant. I don't think we are able to get that without the advisory board, but evidently we are.
Where, because it's more of an engineering side of things, but I'm very interested in advisory board, more than before.
That, that's great news. Yeah, it's a real asset over there, so thanks, thanks for the work on that.
Just to comment on that, that's been about the third iteration of, of a master plan at that airport, that, I know when I was the commissioner, there were two iterations of master plans at that airport, at forty-fourth.
Correct.
This is about, about the third iteration now. I know, and you spend a lot of money in a master plan. What are you still getting, about two hundred thousand dollars a year from the federal government, from, from the state, the fuel sale?
We get, I couldn't tell you the, the exact number. We do get money from the state and the federal government in order to, from a portion of it. But the master plan, I think, the current master plan was up, wasn't updated since two thousand fifteen, I wanna say, two thousand fourteen?
I think it's required every five years.
Yeah. So we want to get this thing up.
Okay. What we got in the council committees? Ms. Wacus is not here, and I don't think there's a report there. I know she's gonna schedule a meeting. Authority boards and commissions, Mr. Culler, you on the phone?
Yes, we have a meeting Thursday, I believe.
Yes, you do.
I've got to see the clerk of counsel immediately.
Yes. Six o'clock on Thursday?
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then I do want to reaffirm that I did talk to the mayor of West Pittston, and he's, he has had to talk to our clerk of counsel, Mrs. Lawrence, and make sure that he might get three people interested.
If so, for the first time in a long while, we'd have enough for a quorum of the authority, of the advisory board at the forty-fourth airport.
Very good. Thank you. Budget, finance, and audit, you heard the update earlier this evening, and once we get through the audit itself, there'll be a meeting with the audit, auditors, and they'll come in, and we'll have a, invite them to one of our work sessions, and we'll also have a meeting with the committee to go over some recommendations and information that they'll provide for us. Legislative, Mr. Hoss?
Legislative, we have not met. The state budget should be passed this week. I keep on hearing it's gonna sail through without much contention. Still, hopefully, you get that two hundred fifty thousand dollar reimbursement for the, for the courts, that would be nice, but I'm not expecting that. But we haven't met, and, you know, we did, the gentleman from Maverick did reach out to us, so Sheila and I and Steve will meet with lobbyist, hopefully, next month, and we can help just communicate what our needs here at the county level, and, you know, take down the cost of the 911 project that we see coming down the bike.
All right, good. Real estate, Ms. Wakis is not here, and again, I think she's gonna be scheduling a meeting shortly. Strategic initiatives, Ms. Houk is not here. Mr. Bellbaum, do you have any?
There hasn't been any meetings.
Thank you. County code review, we have a meeting scheduled for next, prior to our next county council meeting in July.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, could the committee look at, you know, Mr. Griffith's suggested...
We're working on the administrative code.
That 2.7, that, it's a 2.7 amendment about felony vacancies.
I know the number that he mentioned, but it will be part of that review.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Going over to the next page, the council-related, line of properties, Mr. Hoss?
Yeah, we're gonna meet next month. Am I right? No meeting this month.
Okay. Riverfront Parks, the Riverfront Parks Committee had River Fest over the weekend, Friday and Saturday. They had to delay some of the scheduled activities because of the river being at the level it was, so they rescheduled some of those for August, and there'll be more communication when that comes out. And the Plains Township Tiff Committee has not had a meeting. There is a meeting tentatively scheduled for this Thursday at 1:00. And that would be the first time we've met in about probably eight or nine months, so after that meeting, for the next meeting, we'll have some information going forward. Okay, public comment. Mr. Stanziolo?
Hello, my name is Anthony R. Stanziolo, I'm from Foster Township. And this is the third time I'm here concerning this $5 surcharge fee on registration. Recently, I stood before City Council, Hazelton, I gave public notice that I started a group known as the Motorist Defense League. And I've spent over six years researching the evolution and development of registration, and how we got to where we are today, going back all the way to 1903. Starting in 1903, contrary to public opinion, but ownership of a vehicle as private property ended. You don't own your vehicle. For the first two years, all registered vehicles were county property. Then from 1905 to 1918, they were state property, and then from 1919 to the present, they are federal property. So when you buy a car today, you surrender a lorial title known as the certificate of origin. You don't own it. But, see, we're persistent, we have this urban legend. You think that you have the boy toy in front of your house, it's your property, it's not. That determiner mine is a tricky little word, just because you say "my doctor" doesn't mean you own one. A loophole became available in 1969, where the certificate of title can go back where it belongs on the windshield, it's the only registration credential needed. That license plate, we understand today, it's a con man's gimmick, don't need it. The vehicle already has a registration number known as the VIN plate number. That's the only number you need. I don't need PennDOT, I don't need to pay PennDOT to give the vehicle identification number when it already has one. It's time to stop drinking the Kool-Aid. Now, I'm only allowed a couple minutes to speak here, but I'm willing to take my time free of charge if you want to have a work session, and I'm glad to explain or divulge the information that I've accumulated going back. If I may, before the state got into registration business, you bought a car, say, 1902, it was definitely your property. The car left, the key point, the car left the dealer's lot as a marked vessel. There was a brass nameplate bolted on the outside of the body, and that's the required elements, such as the manufacturer, where it was made, and the serial number and model number, cars were given names back then. The dealer had, gave you a notarized, it was called certificate of ownership. That was lorial title, yours. Before the state, the reason why the state had to get into registration business was to commit theft, it was plain and simple, because the invention of the horseless carriage brought about a burden upon the roads, we had to update the roads to meet the new demand, and the politicians did not want to raise general taxes, because some politicians thought it was gonna be a passing fad. Some of your cities, like Wilkes-Barre, Hazelton, I got first-class city, they didn't want to upgrade the roads, so their solution was banning automobiles could not enter the city. So what happened to the Allen Corporation is that the automakers were coerced to remove the brass nameplate from the outside and hide it somewhere, under the dash, under the hood. So now a vehicle is leaving the dealer's lot as an unmarked vessel. So that gave the county, or the state, the self-made excuse to intervene and issue the vehicle a number for public display. But when this happened, when, so for the first two years, when you bought a vehicle, you had to go see the county pro bono to get the paperwork done. But the act number, the key act was Act 202 of 1903, it was a hand of poker, a bluff, because the governor did not sign a declared emergency to authorize this. So when...
Mr. Stanziolo?
Huh?
Mr. Stanziolo? If you would like to send information to us, we'll certainly pass that about...
Okay.
Obviously, you have a lot of history that you have to...
That's right, I do. I have, right now, I have a tentative web, YouTube channel, HandyGent45, one word. And I've been putting my pieces of this puzzle together.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, if I, one last thing. We collect all this money, there was an article in the paper where all this fuel tax, instead of going to fix the roads, because the road's horrendous, they're giving it to the state police. Okay? Wait a minute.
You're correct, and I think what you should do is address your state representative, your state senator, because those are the people who make those laws.
Well, just so you know, I was in, I was in front of Troop End in West Hazelton, state police barracks, I had some business to conduct. I go there, they have this big, huge crane in front of the barracks, the one maintenance guy, I knew I would overtalk to him. What they were doing, they had to remove a window on the second floor, because the captain got a desk that was so big, they had to use the crane to get it into the building. Waste of money. Waste of money.
I don't disagree with you, but there's, unfortunately, we don't have that authorization. Mr. McCabe?
No, I...
You're fine? Mr. Griffith?
I'm really glad that we put the agenda item on the work session to discuss the $5 fee. Thanks, Mr. Urban, for speaking up. There's only other members here, I wish they would have spoke up as well. Clearly, that $5 fee, it's not what we intended it to be. I know Mr. Schnee tried to get an amended, get something amended in there, and it happened to take that away if it wasn't automatically reimbursed by the state, dollar for dollar. But I didn't hear any discussion from anybody else. I guess the $5 fee must be okay. The ability for the manager to just circumvent council is okay. The ability for him to write an attestation and run roughshod over your ordinance, I guess, is okay, because there was no discussion. I'm so glad everybody's so concerned. I hope during the election time, there is concern, because this is really important to the people. This is a $5 fee, it hurts a lot of people, as Mr. Urban said. And there's not a concern for anybody here on council about the $5 fee, other than Mr. Urban? Shame on yous all. You should speak up. It's wrong. It's wrong on more levels than you can count. But you just sit there. I hope the voters don't. I'll move along. No, and I appreciate Harry speaking up about the legislative committee, but council can pass an ordinance to take care of that administrative code amendment, and somebody can do it next week, or next voting session. The charter allows that. If it doesn't happen, maybe the citizens need to do that, because it's wrong. I guess council doesn't think that's wrong either. It's a shame. It's a shame that the people sitting here can't recognize something that's wrong. I just find it appalling. And you're educators, smart people, smart people. And there's people out in the county that aren't near as smart, and can figure it out, and you can't. Sad, it's just sad. Codification of the county council, when is that gonna be done? That's supposed to be done every two years, according to the charter. Is it gonna get done? Someday? How about the minutes on the website? Are they ever gonna get put up on time? Audio minutes? I looked for May 8th audios about the vehicle registration fee, they're not there. What happened to all our minutes? Good thing Mr. Urban doesn't vote for the minutes, because they're wrong, too. But I guess that's not a concern for council, to have our website right, just the departments have to have theirs right. Wow, it's incredible. And they thought the commissioner form of government was bad? God bless us all. Anyone who resigns from the ABCs should be brought into this council meeting and present themselves here as to why they're resigning. This ability to just say, hey, I don't want to be on the committee anymore, doesn't fly. This council has to interview them, this council has to vote. Why doesn't council get to hear why they're quitting? I think that's an important factor. Why did the guy who just got appointed less than a month or two ago, is quitting already? It'd be important to bring him here and ask him. I guess that's not important either. We're only important on putting him on the board, not why they're leaving. That's really important. So I just, the report by the ACE Commission, we haven't had a report by the ACE Commission in years. Not months, years. The charter says they're supposed to come here every year. Every year! Where is he? Where's the ACE Commission? We don't see them. Council doesn't care? Surprising. Council doesn't care. What's the problem? Why doesn't council care? Why don't they make them follow the charter? Why don't you make them come here and speak? They're supposed to give a report. We don't get one. Why? Because we have a dysfunctional council. Can't wait for November.
Mr. Urban?
Stephen J. Urban, Wilkes-Barre again. Glad to see at least council meetings becoming more lively with additional people here, to kind of back up some of what some of us have been saying for many years, or since his former government has been put in place. You know, a couple questions that come to mind when you're listening out in the audience is a little bit different, too. You know, when we're talking about audits, where's your county controller? What kind of audits is she doing? Where's she at? She's absent. You know, been absent since she's got elected, you know, many years ago. You would think a controller would be looking at the books, looking at the checks, looking at audits. That's her main function, is it not? You know, why rely on finance and budget to do everything regarding the audit? Maybe because she's not qualified to do audits herself. You know, that's what happens when the voters elect somebody from the travel agency industry, instead of an accountant, or somebody that at least understands the books in this county. You know, it seems like a lot of the initiatives are going down the Butler Township Sugarloaf, sounds like money going to money to me, you know, when it comes to bridges and roads. You know, people forget about Wilkes-Barre or up here, because some of the certain members on council, and the manager might be from the southern portion of the county. But, you know, the roads up here are a travesty. And people are sick of paying a lot of money into the system. And we're all friends, neighbors, coworkers in this county. We all need to care about one another. You know, one of our cultural beliefs at work is straight talk, and the people out here are giving you straight talk every single time we come up here. And it seems like none of you, or very few of you, care. You know, to some of the issues that are financial in nature. You know, I mean, Luzerne County can be a better place to work, live, and play, if every one of you did your job seriously and held everybody and each other accountable. You know, I know if I sat there, you guys would hold me accountable, and I expect the same from you, as a member of the public at this point in time, to do your job. You know, don't pass the buck to the state senators or state reps. You have an elected position, too. You have the ability to pick up the phone and call them, and talk to them. A lot of you are friends with them. So let them, you know, instead of telling an individual out in public, go and talk to your state senator, go talk to your state rep. Yeah, we could do that, but it's also your job to do that, too, as well. You're elected officials, you take the lead. That's why people put you there. You know, I have issues, I pick up the phone. I called the county manager today on a mental health care issue that I've been still working on, you know, to see how dysfunctional the mental health care system is in this county. We pay tremendous amounts of money into both systems, you know, I mean, I know we use CCS as a provider in this county and Northeast Counseling. Those two don't work together. Trying to get one person help in this county is a travesty. You know, it shouldn't take me, who happens to be maybe partially connected to people in this county, to be able to talk to people. You know, what's it like for the average individual who has a family member that needs mental health care in this county, and they can't get it because people are so dysfunctional? To have a county worker give us paperwork to fill out that she's supposed to do? And I don't think that's legal either. But there's a lot of things that we see wrong as the public. And regarding the rain tax, and all these other taxes, you know, if you look at the sanitary authority, in Wilkes-Barre, they charge you on the same account number for sanitation, or, I'm sorry, recycling fee, sanitary bill, sewer, or sewer maintenance, actually, and sewer rental, and actually recycling, they're all on the same account number. Why not just collectively put one bill out, instead of four postcards for the same account number? I mean, we do things process-wise that cost us a ton of money. And getting back to them, one last thing, getting back to the IT thing, you know, I happen to work with Michelle at one time, and Dave Parsnick, we all worked at Commonwealth Telephone together. Okay? And I know for sure that you can instantly tell which computer that virus came from, instantly. It pops up in the antivirus software off the server, down by IP address and username. So don't tell me you can't find that out within seconds of it happening. Because if we get a virus at work, it goes right to the administrator of that program. And you know what? The phone's either getting lit up, or there's an instant message coming through, you know, shut that computer down immediately, and get it off the network, and disinfect it. So don't tell me you don't know who that is. And it should not take six months, you know, the backup system in this county, it's a travesty that has taken three to four weeks to get this system back up and running, when backups should be done every single night. Every single night.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to address? Ms. Davies first?
I'm going to, I'm gonna break this down into two things, you can split my three minutes accordingly. The WVSA sewer authority fee. So, we have seventy-six governing municipalities. Thirty-two opted into the WVSA hell. What I wanted to say was, on the WVSA board, Sam Gusto is the chairman, which is interesting, because he's also a Hanover Township Commissioner. That makes me a little suspicious. Is he really qualified to be in both positions at the same time? In addition, I have a million-dollar question to propose to council. Why should local property owners pay more to clean up the Susquehanna and the Chesapeake Bay, when the upstream states are not doing anything to stop the sewage or the runoff? In addition, I would like to see a report on how many, how many things in, or properties in Luzerne County still have sewage systems that are running directly into the Susquehanna River. I would like to see some stats on that, because I know it happens, I've seen photos. In addition, the $5 fee for the registration, how many roads are there in Luzerne County that Luzerne County Road and whatever department, how many roads are covered by that authority? And why are we in the road business? Because it seems to me like you're making everyone in the Luzerne County area pay for everything, for like, what, twenty roads, thirty roads at most? I mean, like, and a lot of them are in the Back Mountain, Chase Road, I know, I guess, Main Road in Sweet Valley, Old Route 115, like, those are all Back Mountain roads. Why should you make someone pay for those roads that lives in Mountain Top? Why would you make them pay that $5 fee, when they may not even use those roads? It seems really irrationally unfair, but those are the questions I have for you guys at this point. I don't know if you have answers, but that's where I'm going with this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I take that one?
Well, I think you stated earlier, Mr. Pedri, what, we have 127 miles of roads?
Hundred and twenty-eight miles of road, hopefully have 120 miles of roads.
But the big thing is, we have what, 270 bridges?
Three hundred bridges.
Three hundred bridges.
So, we are currently working, and bridges are a large portion of, three hundred county-owned bridges, we're doing a bridge currently in Hanover for, is it Wilson Street, Mr. Pless? What was the name of that bridge? No, not Division Street, a different one.
West Liberty Street.
West Liberty Street. So we got a report that West Liberty Street had to be lowered from ten tons down to three tons, in order to have a safety, safety purposes. That means that three tons is about the weight of a car. So that means that no buses can go over it, no trucks or anything along those lines. We've had to post that road. That means that Hanover area score district has to change their bus routes in order to get around that bridge. That bridge is a small bridge, about forty feet?
Fifty-two foot span.
Fifty-two foot span, it's gonna cost about a million dollars. That's one bridge. We have three hundred of them. So we have three hundred bridges and over twenty, 128 miles of road, and hopefully, after this foothills drive down, we get down to about 120. Hopefully, after Division Street is completed, we'll get down to 299 bridges. And I'm with you, I don't want to be in the road business either, but we are. And this was a decision made by the county in the eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds, I've been told the Depression, we took over a bunch of roads, but we do have over three hundred bridges, 128 miles of road, and it's our job to maintain them at this point. Okay.
Gentlemen?
You call the army in when everybody else fails. Oh, services. Excuse me, service.
Again, my name is Richard Manta, I'm from the Back Mountain. And what we have to do with this council, this council has to be educated on the situation with the WVSA. We're not here, the people don't want dirty water. But the people don't want to pay the brunt of this situation with these thirty-two municipalities. And the WVSA is holding the people hostage for this. If we would only get together, hire an attorney... I'm sorry. Get together, as a county, and hire an attorney, like Maryland did. Maryland hired an attorney and fought this unfunded mandate with DEP and DER, and they won the case. The little girl, little girl, the woman that was the attorney was from Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania. She went up against these giants, and she fought them, and she won. And they don't have to pay this. Why do we? He was down at the meeting, when I spoke down at the meeting, Mr. Pedri, correct?
I was there.
Yep. And I handed him a paper, and I said, I thought he was an engineer with WVSA. Now I find out he's the head of the council. Okay. My mistake.
He's the county manager.
Or county manager.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
I've never been, that's the first time everybody, everybody's said I've been an engineer.
I thought you were an engineer. I mean, the way you were, the way you were addressing yourself with the WVSA. So what we have to do as people in Luzerne County, we have to pull together, because we are going to get hammered with all of this stuff, and where are we going to get the money? Where are we going to get the money to pay for the airport? You want to propose an extension to the runway, they're going to charge a rainwater fee for that extension of the runway. Where are they going to get the money to pay for the 44th Airport? Could somebody tell me, please? Do we have a money tree growing in the Back Mountain or in the Luzerne County courthouse here that we could pick money from? If somebody could answer that question. But if we get together as a grassroots efforts, I'm out selling signs to raise money to help pay for this attorney that we're going to use to fight the DER and DEP. Why can't Luzerne County help us? And then you don't have to worry about paying $200,000 for the airport, or you don't have to worry about people that are on fixed incomes, people that are on budgets, that they can't afford to pay not only the $5 fee for the license, but the rainwater fee. The fee is just a money-grabbing scheme, because the people down in Lancaster County have been fighting this, and they're winning. Why can't we be winners and be ahead of the game? DER and DEP work for us, and the unfunded mandate that President Obama signed is the whole problem. If we can get to Mr. Trump's ear and tell him to make an executive order to stop this, because he's going to cripple Wyoming Valley, take this into consideration. The rivers are beautiful. Chesapeake Bay is the most breathtaking thing that I've ever seen in my life, and last week was the first time that I crossed over the Chesapeake Bay Bridge, and when I saw those yachts, and I saw those sailboats, and I saw the people swimming in the waters, I'm thinking, boy, Luzerne County is going to keep paying for this for them to have a pleasure. We could have had the same thing here. I know I'm short on time.
No, you're past your time.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, thank you.
But I think you made your point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion for adjournment.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, second.
Second.
Mr. Perry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.